Ian Wilson County Commissioners Court, January thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen. That's session this evening. We give it to the floor.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every and absolute justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
No one has signed up for public comment. Was there anyone who should make a comment? Item three, certificate of obligation. Certificate of Participation of the Texas Agribusiness Thinking Service Awards. This certificate of all files are successfully completed five point five hours of education on time during the District Ten County Commissioners' Court Conference, December thirteenth, two thousand and thirteen, divided by the Texas. Item four, approved bond for Douglas Howlett. Want some commission or comment with the file? Item five, extension activity report handed out. Everyone get a copy of that. And item six, nine a.m., open bids take action on the lease of one hundred and ten acres of ranching and farming land located approximately one mile west of FM nineteen twenty-two on County Road three-ten. You have those with you. Motion to open those.
Move.
Commissioner five, Commissioner, uh, Wiley, all the way.
In case you want to list them, send them down to someone quietly, and then you should do this.
Okay, the first bid is from Mr. John Keiken. He'd like to place a bid on land on County Road three-ten referred to as an upland. A bid is one, uh, one thousand five hundred dollars a year. And give us his contact information. The next bid is from Lee Ward Floe. Bid from Wilson County, County Road three-ten, one hundred and ten acre dump, grazing lease, one thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars per year. Next bid is from Dan Stacey Wyatt. County land bid, thirty-one dollars and fifty cents per acre per year, including weed spray, fertilize annually, maintain all fencing, and they would carry a million dollar liability insurance policy on their agriculture.
How much per acre is that?
Thirty-one fifty per acre.
Thirty-four sixty-five. One hundred and ten times thirty-four fifty.
Final bid is from...
Thirty-four sixty-five.
Final bid is from Frances Chilik. She'd like to offer twenty dollars and ten cents per acre, one hundred and ten acres of ranching farm purposes that man located approximately one mile west of FM nineteen twenty-two on County Road three-ten. The lease term is five years. Twenty dollars and ten cents per acre times one hundred and ten acres is two thousand two hundred and eleven dollars annually. That's close draw on the bid.
Sound pretty simple, but the one thing I've... The sheriff has a shooting range back there, and the person before had cooperated with the operator with moving things and everything. The sheriff, is there any, anything you need to...
We just do a couple of times a year if, uh, if cattle could be moved off for just a day or two, so we can leave the gate open, you know, wherever we're going in and out. But it's just, you know, a couple of times a year.
Uh, so probably what we need to do is go ahead and accept one and end it in visiting with the sheriff on, on, on that particular thing. And I guess Wyatt's was far above than anything else.
Obviously.
Get our motion, Mr. Wiley, file all the papers. And, uh, we need to, uh, to close on that as quick as possible for, uh, if, if necessary to be in place for our, uh, selling of the certificate of obligation. I know it doesn't sound connected, but we found out. What are you, what are you, the two-year contract or the five?
It's a five year.
Wyatt's...
I don't, I don't know.
It's a five year.
Did it specify on there? In the past, it's been considered a five-year.
Judge Goddard, that's a, okay, that's a...
The gentleman said it was a...
I told us it was a five-year.
Five year?
Is that what the paper said? Oh, here it is. Yes, it is, Judge. It does say five years.
Five years.
So I guess the sheriff needs to get with Mr. White.
Yeah, I'll get with it. Now, you, did you hear what we was talking about?
Yes, sir.
Did that sound like a problem to you?
Was, could we put a cattle guard in or something and, something like that? The way you leave the gate open.
Yeah, that would work.
Do something like that. Or, how many times a year or what, what days and?
Well, just about twice a year.
Okay.
But that usually on Saturday. But the cattle guard would be, uh, that's more than...
Yeah, I got one. I'm gonna stay one at the range.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay, item seven, vote up here in courthouse annex one, two, three, update, comments and questions. Anyone have any comments or questions? Uh, go ahead.
Just curious, what's the status of...
Okay, we met, uh, what day was it?
Thursday?
Thursday with the, uh...
Oh, Wednesday, I'm sorry, Wednesday.
Wednesday with the attorney from, uh, Vicarstaff and, uh, the financial advisor, the architect, the auditor, and, uh, who knows? Uh, John Hope. It was a very productive meeting. Uh, it was, one thing we did find out that because no matter what this amount is on this landfill, that that's necessary to be in place as a revenue stream before we can complete that. It has no connection. It's a good thing we have an attorney. It's, uh, it's part of it. And, uh, the, uh, the financial, uh, Mr. Henderson pressed, uh, Nancy to get more information to him and, uh, the, uh, Nancy had been working with the state up there on about, what, seven hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars grant possibly, you know, that will help, you know? It's not, don't go that far, but I mean, and it looked like things are going to come in, uh, below what they thought as far as, but it's all, like I say, it was a coordinated committee, uh, meeting to make sure that we get, and, uh, so, uh, the certificate of obligations after this is completed on there, the twentieth, twenty, what, twentieth, what time, what's the meeting?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. We will sell the farm that they'll go up and, uh, so, uh, certificate of obligation that they'll, they'll, uh, and, uh, I think April was mentioned that, uh, the clearing of the, the historical grant and everything and, uh, that, uh, he has worked with them in a very open situation and basically telling them that we're not tearing any annexes off and we're not taking any stucco off because the stucco was basically holding bricks in place and so forth and so on, and they're still willing to look at it and make the...
The reduction in, um, in the available funds that, that Mr. Thorne thought might be there through that, through the grants, is that due to the fact that there have been a lot of different counties that apply and there's a limited amount of money or is it related to...
What would you, what would you look at? What, the deduction, uh, deduction or...
Well, I thought you said that, that the amount of funds for the, the emergency grant was not as large as he had first anticipated. Did I hear that or not?
Yeah, well, now, the one thing, the emergency money, and this goes back to a few meetings back, the emergency monies that was available for that, my understanding was that Duval County was in, and it paid big debt, but that gives, I mean, that gets caught, but that, that was...
Well, I knew there were limited funds. The feeling was that since we had the oldest active courthouse that we were definitely going to be a strong runner. I just was wondering if there were additional courthouses that come into it or perhaps they'd looked at the fact that we're not willing to knock down...
No, no, I was like, that, that didn't matter. It's just a matter of that, the other, the other county down there is into it.
You know, if we thought that we might get six or eight hundred or whatever that number was, if we get half of that, we're, we're, we're a lot better off than we were before.
I mean, it'll go along with it.
Yes, sir.
That answer your question, Travis. Out of eight, discussion of potential actions, discussion of potential actions to occur regarding the proposed boundary changes to county election precincts designed as box one oh-one and box one oh-three pursuant to forty-two point zero three one B three of the Texas Election Code, box one oh-one, annex tract number four one nine one eight, whose address is fifty-one County Road, one fifty, Florisville, Texas seventy-eight one one four, and box one oh-three for the purpose of acquiring a suitable building available for the use of the polling place in box one oh-one, no other suitable building being available within box one oh-one. You want to explain that?
Yes, sir. Uh, as you know, when we discussed using voting box one oh-one, which is pepperoni's pizza, I brought to your attention that possibly that might be sold and it was sold. We were not able to locate the new owner. You see, possibly we could use it while they renovated the building in the primary area and looked on this along with, uh, myself, Rose and Olga tried to find a suitable place. We also contacted one of the chairmen's of the party, they're responsible, half of them take half the list and they don't take the other half, and we were not able to find anything within this precinct, within that area. But if we cross across, uh, off this Stewart Road and one eighty-one, directly across, it's a little corner, and it's just a little bitty little V that goes like this, okay? It has no people that live on it, but it has a building called Remnant Vista that was once in there. They were agreeable to letting us use that. The parking is really nice and when you cross the road, you can see it. If you're coming this way home from work, you can see it. If you missed it, I mean, it's right on the cross thing. You don't have to go around and come back, okay? So I spoke with both chairmen and, uh, they understood that there, there was no other suitable location. We had a deadline where you have to order your ballots, and so Secretaries State said that if we came around, came across the road and scooped it up, that they would allow us to do that. So we got together with Dana and Ms. Chapman, and they were very cooperative in getting all the paperwork ready, and we would like for y'all to be agreeable to annex that little section from one oh-three to one oh-one.
And that little V go...
It's a, go ahead.
Yeah, but that for, uh, for, just for right now, because, uh, I think after we get done with this election for this year, we're gonna have to look down, further down one eighty-one south and start looking for more places, because if that one, you know, one day it also gets to sell, or what they have right now, they're using it suitable for the handicap people.
Yes, they just handicap accessible, has a ramp, uh, and it has plenty of...
And I think we're gonna have to get together and try to see how we're gonna redo the other... Because, I mean, we're gonna have to go all the way probably to County Road one twenty and take back one twenty-eight coming back north, so, so, I mean, there are just no locations on that one eighty-one toward that area.
This is a solution for the primary that we're in, hopefully, coming in for elections. So it's for this year's calendar.
So, motion, Commissioner Gamm, in a second. Commissioner Wiley, all the way. All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Ian, Mr. White.
Item nine, discuss take action on reappointing of George Jones and Tammy Cunnion.
Stop blowing your...
I thought he ran away, Judge.
Go ahead, Mr. White. Swear them in at this time?
We're gonna make your motion.
Motion? Marilla, in a second. Mr. Wiley, all the way.
All right.
Mr. Wiley, would you like to...
You did, sir.
In the name and in authority of the State of Texas, both of all, I, which is Donald Swear, all firm, I will faithfully execute the uses of the office of honor, reason, and deed of nothing but to protect and maintain the integrity of the United States and the Constitution of America.
Thanks, sir, appreciate it.
Thanks for, thank, thanks for your service.
Thank you, my brother.
Out of ten, discuss take action on reappointing of Frank Givens, who does County Central Bridge District.
Motion, Commissioner Gamm, Commissioner Marilla, all the way.
All right.
Item two-year term.
Yeah.
Item eleven, discuss take action on application for an act of gathering permit of five acres longed vest in San Antonio.
Why they got to put their face out of, uh, you see no calls?
There's a lot of people there, according to legal, I don't know, the sheriff already, but twenty thousand people over two days, a lot of traffic, a lot of parking.
I encourage you to go run through it. It'd be good.
So what, this is phone? Can they run through it?
They had it last year. It's a phone they had last year.
Is this at the Cycle Ranch?
Yes, ma'am.
It's a fundraiser. More than I know. Do they do fundraising for hot... Rest cancer? Different thing.
Last year was Boys and Girls Club.
Was that what it was that time?
I just sent the letter trying to get something from my fundraisers for the Shriners Children's Hospitals, because they made, they made eighty thousand last year for Boys and Girls Club.
I wonder if you want to go with it.
I'm gonna pick it.
No, I'm gonna camp. I wanna respect it.
Yes, ma'am?
No.
I mean, if they're probably, if they don't block the street, the road like they did before, the last time they busted it, it was probably, it was all up the road. Some people can't get down the road to back up traffic on what they want. You don't have security? No. I'll make a motion to approve as long as they get with the sheriff for the security.
Okay, uh, you haven't, you haven't signed anything on yet, Sheriff?
Yeah, I wouldn't have approved it. I mean, they, they worked with us before, so I won't see any problems.
Motion, Commissioner Gamm, Commissioner Gamm, all the way. Item twelve, discuss take action, community real, community services in seeking an in-kind office space within temporary county complex for the Wilson County Mobile Crisis Outreach Team. The Wilson County Mobile Crisis Outreach Team will respond to mental health crisis calls from the jail, emergency rooms, schools, and safe locations within the county. The space will be temporarily located while a crisis residential meeting is built.
Honored Commissioners' guests, thank you for having us this morning. Uh, Mobile Crisis Team is one that's gonna operate, we're not gonna provide services in the building itself that we leave from this building to respond to emergency rooms for those individuals the sheriff may pick up or go to the emergency room where they have a mental health crisis such as suicide, homicide, thoughts, they injured themselves because of the mental status, and we go in and we try to move them to the most, to the safest location, which could be the San Antonio State Hospital, one of the hospitals there, or we provide them aftercare services in the community. The, uh, we're in the process of hiring staff. We just run out of office space and that's why we've asked for the in-kind. Uh, the team will actually alleviate the workers that are in our B Street location under Belma here's direction, relieve them from having to be up in the middle of the night handling crisis in time and work the next day and trying to serve the regular scheduled clients. So this team is important for that as well as the community as a whole as we move forward in developing better crisis response.
Have y'all narrowed it, your permanent location down?
No, no, sir, that's still in negotiation.
What period of time are we talking about?
I would like to be able to have, or we would like to have from February first for at least one year, and we think by the year we'll have the permanent location and building of our structure, a permanent structure up. But it may run a little longer than a year, but I don't anticipate...
And they've basically looked at the other, one of the other classrooms over there that, like, uh, the council taken and everything, and, uh, that'll further go, I mean, we're very flush in that area, but we're fortunate that we are, that our in-kind matches, four and four, we can stand on town health, and that'll be credited to, to us also, so it, uh, and, uh, so, and I believe, oh, said you'd put whatever expense you need to in the building.
We would put the phones in, we'll do the internet and, uh, whatever in-kind services you're authorizing, janitorial services, but the only thing I could think of that would be in addition to the space, other than that, we could take care of, we'll take care of the painting of the walls according to what you've asked for as far as specifications go.
Motion, Commissioner, I'm with Commissioner Gamm, all the way.
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all for watching, we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Item thirteen, England Baker, help in public safety, discuss approve and acting program.
We, uh, we're talking with Commissioners, but we're gonna keep putting that on there just in case. Right now, we're, we've had a few requests with, uh, from some of those precincts to look at it, but we haven't had the fires, our investigation was pretty much, it shuts down and burning and subdivision, and we haven't had any problems with it up to this point.
Thank you, appreciate it. Item fourteen, discuss take action on resolution advocating hyperbaric oxygen therapy and other medical treatments and therapies for TBI PTSD. The resolution advocating hyperbaric oxygen therapy and the medical treatments and therapies for TBI PTSD, whereas the signature, signature wounds of Iraq and Afghanistan are traumatic brain injuries, the post-traumatic stress disorder, and our significant health issues of Texas veterans returning from service in Iraq and Afghanistan, operating enduring freedom, Operations Iraqi Freedom and Operations New Dawn, and whereas the effects of these conditions are usually long-lasting and often life-threatening, frequently suicide, and currently there are no definitive medical treatments for the TBI and the treatments being provided today are all qualitative drugs and, and our counseling. Whereas several well-documented morbid curative therapies are available, including hyperbaric oxygen therapy, that offers additional alternative curative ways to restore affects veterans' lives and minds, whereas numerous studies have demonstrated that the untreated lingering effects of these injuries adversely impact the returning veterans' lives, resulting frequently in destroying families, drug and alcohol use, unemployment, mental illness, incarceration, and homelessness. Whereas these results show up in society and communities, an increased unemployment rates, public healthcare treatment costs, mental illness costs, drug and alcohol treatment costs, family breakups and destructive lives. And whereas the VA, military, medicine, or Medicare will reimburse medical practitioners for their efforts to help these veterans, therefore being resolved that Wilson County, that Wilson County strongly urges the Texas state government to provide appropriate funding and focus to provide results-oriented evidence based upon proven treatment, including hyperbaric oxygen therapy for returning Texas veterans that suffer from residual aftereffects of TBI PTSD, signed at date. Uh, months, a few months ago, I attended a conference in Fredericksburg, and, uh, the, there was a presentation made there on return, one of the returned veterans, this was an Oklahoma case, where he went to the doctor and they said, yeah, brain damage and there's nothing that we can do about it. And they did this hyperbaric, if everybody's not familiar, that's pure oxygen chamber that a person goes in and so on. And I think it's about, if they go like sixty days, an hour or so a day, and it, it healed their wounds, and, uh, that's what they're advocating and asking for is endorsement of that, and, uh, I've got a... The only thing I could think of that would be in addition to the space, other than that, we can take care of it. We'll take care of the painting of the walls according to what you've asked for as far as specifications go.
Motion, Commissioner Bowles, Commissioner Bowles, all three.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for that. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Good day.
Thank you.
Out of thirteen, Edwin Baker, Health and Public Safety, discuss and approve an act of carnage.
We're talking with commissioners, but we're gonna keep putting that on there just in case.
We don't have any of this.
Right now, we've had a few requests from some of these precincts to look at it, but we haven't had the fires. Our investigation was pretty much to shut it down and burn it and subdues it, and we haven't had any problems with it up to this point.
Thank you, appreciate it. Out of fourteen, discuss and take action on resolution advocating hyperbaric oxygen therapy and other medical treatments and therapies for T B I and P T S D. The resolution advocating hyperbaric oxygen therapy and the medical treatments and therapies for T B I and P T S D. Whereas the signature wounds of Iraq and Afghanistan are traumatic brain injuries. The post-traumatic stress disorder and our significant health issues with the Texas veterans returning from surges in Iraq and Afghanistan. Operating Enduring Freedom, Operations Iraqi Freedom, and Operations New Dawn. And whereas the effects of these conditions are usually long-lasting and often life-threatening, frequently suicide. And currently, there are no definitive medical treatments for the T B I and the treatments being provided today are all pilot drugs and our counseling. Whereas several well-documented mor- curative therapies are available, including hyperbaric oxygen therapy that offers additional alternative curative ways to restore affects veterans' lives and minds. Whereas numerous studies have demonstrated that the untreated lingering effects of these injuries adversely impacted returning veterans' lives, resulting frequently in destroying families, drug and alcohol use, unemployment, mental illness, incarceration, and homelessness. Whereas these results show up in society and communities in increased unemployment rates, public healthcare treatment costs, mental illness costs, drug and alcohol treatment costs, family breakups and disrupted lives. And whereas the V A, military medicine, or Medicare will reimburse medical practitioners for their efforts to help these veterans. Therefore, be it resolved that Wilson County strongly urges the Texas state government to provide appropriate funding and focus to provide results-oriented evidence-based of proven treatment, including hyperbaric oxygen therapy for returning Texas veterans that suffer from residual after-effects of T B I and P T S D. Signed at date. A few months ago, I attended a conference in Fredericksburg. And the, there was a presentation made there on return, one of the returned veterans, this was an Oklahoma case. We went to the doctor and they said, yeah, brain damage and there's nothing that we can do about it. And they did this hyperbaric, if everybody's not committed, that's pure oxygen chamber that person goes into. And I think it's about, they go like sixty days, hours or so a day, and it healed their wounds. That's what they're advocating and asking for is endorsement of that. And I've got a C D that I, homework that I brought back that everyone would like to see it. I was gonna give it to our veteran officer and let him, and I just haven't got it to give him to do this. Motion to Commissioner Wiley, Commissioner Bowles, all three.
Aight.
Out of fifteen, South Central Surveying, request for reimbursement on account, two hundred thirteen dollars account to be closed in County Department Office.
We have a surveying company that did a lot of business in this area at one time and they had an account there for a long time. And they're working in another part of another county, so they would like that on their account. And I don't have a checkbook, so all our monies go to the treasurer, so we would like the treasurer to have that.
Motion, Commissioner Bowles, all three. Out of sixteen, Dan Harrell, County Treasurer, approved payments to be paid in vacation, rentals, and budget payments.
These are the payments that I pay all the time, but every January, I'm running through court. Right. I have the telephone, the internet, the, um, anything to do with payroll. The monthly fees, the time warrants, lease purchases. We pay the appraisal district a year, every year, four quarters of the year. And the same thing with the district, we have to pay the district attorney, we pay it on a quarterly basis. And of course, you man, I know that's the vision, the demo, and the help, but all those two, you man, we're just with that one company.
Is that Alamo Resource Conservation?
I just wanted to say, Albert, that's the one that you gave us to put on here. We gotta take that one off, okay? I'll cross them off. We won't send them in.
Yeah.
Okay? I would take that one off. I know you gave that to us that one time. The Alamo Resource Conservation, if you want, I'll redo it with that one over.
Okay.
And bring it to you. Okay?
Anybody else have any exceptions? If not, we'll. Commissioner Bowles, all three.
Aight, good.
Thank you.
Out of seventeen, B and H O T A M C, a utility permit, four eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-one. So Frank's a total.
George, you can say three and then you say four.
Ten or four minutes. We take them all together. All, 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 one through seven, Motion, Commissioner Marilla, the second, Commissioner Bowles, all three.
Aight.
You want a burger? You want a burger?
It's not the little one, man.
Out of B, temporary water lines, U O D, B forces, precinct two, County Road two oh seven, and County Road two fourteen. Two, it's a non-car operating L S D, precinct two, County Road two oh five, disinformation, original. Out of C is non-standard flat variance, U S eighty-seven west, one seven two two five haze, discuss and take action.
This variance request came before a committee last week, was given a favorable recommendation. They are asking a variance and having to meet the forty-foot of road front requirement. It's a large tract of land to be divided amongst family members and the large tract doesn't even have forty-foot of road frontage itself. It only has just under thirty foot of road frontage, so there's no way they could provide road frontage to each tract to get it. So a variance, we've given a favorable recommendation, the condition that they create a private road and each tract be addressed on that private road.
Motion, Commissioner Bowles, the second, Commissioner Marilla, all three. Out of two, the U S Highway one zero north, six four forty-seven, five three all, County Road one eighty-two, one point eight. Calaveras Ranch Partners, L P, discuss and take action.
Uh, this was a portion, there was some remaining acreage that hasn't been planted yet by, um,
Andy McBride.
By Andy McBride.
Corizo Ranch?
Corizo Ranch subdivision, yeah. And he wanted to split off the one point nine four acres and sell that separately from the remaining acreage. It had plenty of road frontage, the remaining acreage is ultimately going to be planted and has road frontage off one of the roads within that subdivision, so.
Motion, Commissioner Bowles, all three. Out of three, A three, fifty-three, fifty-five. Shoot!
On the two, please simply tell me.
Commissioner Bowles, Commissioner Bowles. And then we'll, out of three, A three, fifty-three, fifty-five, go ahead and discuss and take action.
And this is a tract purchased by Mr. Joe Hanson in the Severance Springs. And the two point two acre tract that he's divided into smaller tracts. And both tracks met the required road frontage, it's given a favorable recommendation.
Motion, Commissioner Bowles, all three. Out of eighteen, yes. First of all, Commissioner Bowles, all three. Out of nineteen, nine. Number one, please, sir.
Yes. I had started putting one, that maybe two checks, please. We're down to eleven million, but maybe soon, but I have to take out a very big amount, I'm willing to make a little, so we'll run it down a bit. Just wanted to join in.
You press your thumb. Favorable for you, can, uh?
Your signature and, uh, your information.
Jeremy Garcell resigned twelve nine, two thousand and thirteen. Department three forty is county auditor. Tom Duke Nick was hired twelve ten, two thousand and thirteen, Department three forty, for five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars a month as a county auditor. Megan Eisenhower was hired twelve sixteen, two thousand and thirteen, Department four twenty, two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars a month as a dispatcher. Roland Trevino resigned twelve thirty-one, two thousand and thirteen, Department five oh one as an investigator. Megan Emerson resigned twelve thirty-one, two thousand and thirteen, Department four twenty as a dispatcher. Grace Roth was hired, one one, two thousand and fourteen, Department four twenty, two thousand nine seven dollars and thirty-four cents a month as a part. She went from part-time to full-time clerk. Mary Servantes, one one, two thousand and fourteen, Department three hundred. She went from part-time to full-time J T number one clerk, one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars a month. Dennis Lilly was hired one one, two thousand and fourteen, one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars a month, Department three eighty. She went from part-time to full-time tax office clerk. And Shanna James was hired, one fourteen, two thousand and fourteen, Department four twenty, two thousand and two hundred and fifty dollars a month as a correction officer. An investigator, yeah?
Thank you, thank you. Commissioner Bowles, all three.
Thank you. Anybody else? Oh, yes.
Out of twenty-one, Bill. Don't wait until it's done, that's not.